Good evening and welcome to the City of Tempe Regular City Council Meeting for Monday, October 22, 2018. If we could all rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is our meeting minutes, Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like for the approval of meeting minutes A1 through 3.
It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry forward. Next is item 3B, Acceptance of Board and Commission Meeting Minutes, Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to approve Acceptance of Board and Commission Committee Meeting Minutes, B1 through 12.
It's been approved by Councilman Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next item is a reports and announcements, and I'll come down to the podium and read that. The first announcement is the Tempe Halloween House Proclamation. If Francis and Jessica Brown, if you could please come forward, along with two beautiful daughters. Well, we are happy to be here today with another one of Tempe's featured wave makers. The Browns live in South Tempe and have the most incredible spooky and spirited Halloween home in the city. The community is invited to take a stroll past the giant headless horseman or take a selfie with Jack the Skeleton. Let's learn a little bit more about the Browns' incredible home with you watching the video right now.
I'm Jessica Brown, my family and I, we own this beautiful house that's decorated for the season.
If you would like to join our jamboree, there's a simple rule that's compulsory.
My husband and I both grew up loving Halloween and Christmas and had all the family traditions, and we wanted to bring that to our family and our neighborhood. And the best way to do that, we thought, was to make our home open to everyone.
So hurry back, we would like your company.
This is awesome. It's so much fun. Everybody in the neighborhood loves it. Kids love it, and it's just great for Halloween spirit. People come by and they're just stopped in front of the house, including us neighbors, and then we'll talk to each other. It's almost like a local meeting. It's like the town square.
There's snakes, and I don't like snakes. And the third was really scary because I don't like spiders.
The charity we've chosen this year for our season is Sojourner Center, which is a center that helps families that have been affected by human trafficking and domestic abuse. Our house is open to our neighborhood and our community, not just anything, but anyone that's around this house is here for them to experience and to come enjoy, and then in exchange, to support Sojourner Center charity. Best time for people to come would be around sunset, maybe a little bit before, to see it in the light and then watch it change and become even more magical. And then till about 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock, the lights will dim and sun turn on.
I love the eyes. It looks like those eyes were real and scary, and it's a big monster. And Halloween's my favorite holiday by far.
Well, Tempe is a place where that values neighborhoods and neighborly connections. And whereas Francis, Jessica Brown, and their family have turned their South Tempe home into a Halloween wonderland that brings friends and neighbors together during the season. And whereas the Brown family brings joy and goosebumps to both the young and the old at heart, and the young at heart with their Halloween display. And whereas the Brown family collects gifts for nonprofit organizations from those who visit the house from near and far. And whereas the City of Tempe considers the Brown family as wave makers who stand out as energetic, creative, and caring community members. Now, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare October 31, 2018, as the Brown family's Halloween House Day in Tempe, Arizona. All right, next, could we have Ryan LeVax and Lee Jimenez, if you could please come down? Today, we are taking the time to shine some recognition on our community planning staff members. Here at the City of Tempe, we are lucky to say that our planning department has been pretty busy the last few years, which is a sign of growth in our community. They help process and facilitate development, and they've been pretty busy the last few years. And they help process and facilitate development entitlements such as use permits, variances, development plans, adoption of codes, ordinances, and long-range plans, like the urban plan, the urban core master plan, and the character areas. And thank you for all that you've done for us and your extremely valuable work in helping shape the great City of Tempe. With that being said, I do have a proclamation that I would like to read from the city to you. And whereas a change is constant and affects all cities and towns, community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people live, work, and play. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningful, involved in making choices that determine the future of our community. And whereas a full benefit of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as a National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas a celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of our boards and commissions, the city council, and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the City of Tempe. And we recognize the many valuable contributions made by the professionals in our community and our city planners for Tempe and are extended our heartfelt thanks for all the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare as October 2018 as our National Community Planning Month. And if I have the council come down, because this is something that every single member of this council has really been involved with, from our urban core master plan to not only the census, which I was hoping you guys, but all the planning for the urban, the planning essentials to the city to make it what it is today. So I think it's important that we all take part in this presentation, and thank you so much. Next, we have our Lights On After School Proclamation. Could Cynthia Garcia and Gloria McDowell from Kid Zone, can you please come down? And let me tell you, this is something that I've been attending since we started this, and I can't thank you guys enough as well as the city council can as well. Kid Zone has been a staple in our Tempe schools for more than 27 years, providing morning and afternoon care to children in K through 5th grade. As many Tempe parents know, it's an amazing program that offers our kids homework to help for help with their homework, as well as free enrichment classes, as well as a little fun after school. The City of Tempe is lucky to have such an amazing and award-winning program, and in order to promote the importance of after-school programs such as Kid Zone, we will be recognizing Keep the Lights On After School Day with a proclamation, and it states, "Whereas the citizens of Tempe stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs and the opportunities because they provide safe and challenging and engaging learning experiences that help children develop social and emotional and physical and academic skills, support working families by ensuring the children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends, build stronger communities by involving students, parents, business leaders, and adult volunteers, and in the lives of young people. And whereas programs such as the Kid Zone's enrichment program has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement, specifically in the education and the well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. And whereas Lights On After School, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October 26, 2018, promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. And whereas more than 28 million children in the U.S. have parents who work outside of their home, and 15.1 million children have no place to go after school, why many after-school programs across the country are facing funding shortfalls, so serve that they are being forced to serve those or close their doors and turn off their lights. Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare as October 25, 2018, as Lights On After School Day in Tempe, Arizona." Let's give a little pause. Thank you, guys, for everything you have to say. The last announcement I have is our 2020 Census Committee Appointments. On the consent calendar this evening, under 5A1, the council colleagues and I will be appointing a diverse set of individuals that will make up a complete count committee. These committee members will be charged with being the 2020 Census Advocates, helping to represent the unique affiliation and encourage the most complete count of Tempe. Having an accurate count for Tempe is extremely important for determining how much federal funding that we actually receive for needs like transportation, housing assistance, and more. So thank you to all these 32 individuals for dedicating your time and your energy to this very important effort. I look forward to working with you along with the council over the next two years to make sure we get an accurate account. And also on this agenda, in partnership with the city clerk's office, the city council would also like to thank all the residents and other community members who offer their dedication and expertise to Tempe's boards and commissions. There will be several vacancies on 14 boards and commissions that need to be filled by the end of the year. If you're feeling like you want to be more involved in your community, serving on one of these boards might just be the thing for you. So I encourage you to get on and visit our city clerk's website at www tempe.gov/boards and commissions to learn more and to apply. Applications are also available in the back of the city council chambers if you want to grab them tonight. The city council tonight will be considering appointments to the Tempe Aviation Commission, the Development Review Commission, the Neighborhood Advisory Commission, the Parks, Recreation, and Golf, and the Double Butte Cemetery Advisory Board, and the Transportation Commission as outlined on item 5A2 of this agenda. That's all I have for announcements. Mr. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no announcements tonight.
Okay, we'll go on to the next item on our agenda, which is our Consent Agenda. All the items listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed by a council member for separate consideration. Please note that there are no public hearing items listed on the Consent Agenda. Miscellaneous items 5A1 through 5A11, the exception of, actually, 5A11 has been removed and deleted from this agenda at the request of staff. Awards and bids and contracts, items 5B1 through 5B14. We also are going to be continuing item 5B1 to the November 15, 2018 Regular Council Meeting at the request of staff. And we have resolutions, items 5C1 through 5C16. I look to my council colleagues, is there a motion? Yeah, what's that item? I think we're going to remove item, item 5, which number is it? Yeah, we're going to, if we could, we're going to remove for separate consideration item 5A6. Is there anything else from the council or a motion on the Consent Agenda as read with the removal of item 5A6 and what I mentioned earlier? Yes, Councilmember Granville?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 5B8.
5B8. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as read with the exception of 5A6, 5B8, and 5B11 has been deleted at the request of staff, and item 5B1 has been continued to November 15? Moved by Councilman Arredondo Savage, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. That motion passes 7 to 0. We will go to item 5A6. If we could have, right, Commander Horn's coming on down.
Would you like to read the title of that?
I'm not ready to do that.
Thank you.
Item 5A6 is to approve a transfer from the general fund from contingency budget to the police department budget not to exceed $250,000 for improved park security for the remainder of this fiscal year. First, I'd like to see if the council had any items or discussion, questions on item 5A6. And I know we have some, we have Commander Horn here as well. This is, you want to me to kick it off? Are you going to mention a little bit about it?
Do you want me to answer specific questions?
Right now, I just, this is something that's been brought to the attention of all the council regarding our parks and our neighborhoods. I've heard over and over again, I know my colleagues have, over the, over the last year or a couple of years, that neighborhood parks are really one of the main priorities for a city council. Not only that, because they involve our neighborhoods. We're very fortunate in Tempe to have a park every square mile in our community. I often say that the cornerstone of our community are our neighborhoods, and the cornerstone of our neighborhoods are our community parks, and that's something that's very important. You know, we spent, just last year or two years ago in our CIP, we spent over $49 million of improving our parks and looking into, you know, municipal bonds to promote the idea of to improve the quality of life of our residents. And it's so important that we help protect the asset that our residents have expected and wanted us to preserve and enhance and maintain. And I think the additional security in our parks, to have eyes and ears and to help with our residents, and even those in our park that may need some additional services, that there's an opportunity for this to happen with the increased security of our parks. I think it's so, so important for us. This is a pilot program that's being, that we as a council are considering, and it's something I think that it's a commitment to our neighborhoods, that everyone, regardless if you live in a neighborhood or a resident of Tempe or visiting Tempe, have access to safe and secure parks in our community. And I think this is a program that can help us as a pilot and interim. Is there any other questions from the council on item 5A6? Yes, would you like to, well, you have a specific question? Because they're not, I mean, they're here to answer some questions, it's not so much of a presentation, and give an overview of what this will go to and how this will be implemented. And actually, I guess a question would be how we came about. We already have an RFP out for security throughout the city, and we're just utilizing our existing RFP.
Yeah, so let me just give you a brief, a brief overview. Like, we did the Tempe Accelerates presentation not too long ago on the council priority involving feeling of safety in parks. And one of the things we talked about, and Mayor, you alluded to it, is when we, these parks are those spaces that we've kind of designed as a city for people to do community, for people to interact with one another, kids to spend time with another, just basically to do life in those spaces throughout the City of Tempe. And one of the concerns that's been raised is that there are some in our community who do not feel, at different times during the day or night, may not feel as safe in our, in our parks. And so we started looking at a number of different options to address that, and some of the things that come into play involve with, you know, design or redesign, partnering with Public Works and Public Works on that. And a part of that, we started to look at some successes we've had using G4S or private security at Escalante and the library complex. And so we started looking at, is there some ways perhaps that we can expand their current use into our parks, essentially to be extra eyes, eyes and ears within our parks? So specifically, overall, their purpose is to enhance that feeling of safety for everybody that's in the parks. And we worked on developing a code of conduct, which is based on our existing ordinances in our parks and state statutes, and basically created just a simplified list for private security, in this case, G4S, to really to educate people in the park as they, you know, see problems, just what the expectations are for this space, you know, for everybody. Our outreach teams are also going to use this as they interact with folks in the parks. The whole idea is to be proactive, to address any concerns on the front end, and to use G4S, similar to what they do already right now, which to educate on our code of conduct, those expectations, to mitigate problems as they come up, and if need be, to work with the police department on enforcement. But hopefully, with this space, this presence, this extra eyes and ears, that it will help address some of the problems that, that we've seen. And obviously, this is in addition to what we've been doing as a police department already, but we can't be everywhere, everywhere all the time. And so this allows for extra eyes, extra ears, to help deal with and mitigate issues and problems. They tie right into our radio system, so if there's anything that we need to directly be involved in, they can call for us to, you know, to, to do that as well. So that's a broad overview.
Councilmember Granville, then Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, just two questions. Thanks, thank you for the presentation, first off. Two questions. Number one is, it talks about it being a pilot program. It doesn't say how long. Is it a year pilot program, six months? And then the second question, if you could just address a little bit of the training that G4S goes through and what that looks like in the way of hours or types of training so that they're handling situations appropriately.
So your first question, what we're looking to do is basically to finish out this fiscal year to try it and to see, you know, see how it works. And see, it's, what's that?
Yeah.
1819, yes. There is a, it's a little bit tricky because we're right in the middle of an RFP process for private security because the contract is up December 31st, and so, you know, G4S has put in for that, I'm sure there's a number of other companies, so we could go through another transition, the first of the year, we'll work through that if that happens. But ultimately, we're looking at this through June of 2019, essentially, to give that, give us a shot. Your second question was pertaining to training. So the G4S, by the contract, G4S utilizes certified, or the private security company that we use, uses certified private security through, through the state. In addition to that, G4S has, and primarily, they hire, for the ones that work here in Tempe, those that have law enforcement experience. Some of them have still remained certified by Arizona Post. And they also, once they hire somebody, they do 40 hours of initial training, which, you know, will involve just general, what the expectations are, de-escalation procedures, use of force, just, you know, the general type training. Though, for those that are armed, they'll do an additional, it's about 24 to 26 hours related to firearms, TASER and OC with that. And then they have regularly, through their own company, ongoing training. For the Tempe contracts, wherever G4S actually has a presence, there is additional training that happens for that particular site or that, that duty. So what we're looking to do here is, in addition to whatever training they've had, is especially for those new folks who haven't had the experience of working with the park environment, and we have a number of those that have already done that with G4S, but that we would do two days of training with them to orient them to, to the parks, what the expectations are. And then we're also, we've partnered with Law and Frontier Impact to provide mental illness, mental health training and response to, similar to, I think, most of you over the last year were aware that we spent, we put all of our officers through this training. That was part of that One Mind Campaign through IACP, which we took part in. And so they have agreed Law and Frontier to create or to put a separate class, eight hours that we can put through all of our G4S employees that'll be involved in our parks. And we believe that we can get that done by the end of November of this year. And then we will include them, or whomever the private security company is, next year through ongoing training that we do as well. Did I answer that question? Okay.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes, first of all, it's good to see you gentlemen again. Thank you for the presentation. I just have a question. You brought up about the Escalante Center and that you've been using G4 services at the Escalante Center.
The city has, yes.
I'm sorry?
The city has, yes.
The city has, okay. Can you provide some specifics about how it has helped the neighborhood?
I would say this, that, to give you specific data points right now, I, I'm not prepared to give those to you. But I will tell you, if you interact with that community that's over there at the community meetings, and you talk to, even in the Tempe Accelerates presentation on facilities, they talked about the center and that, that particular park, that one of those elements that's helped them just address concerns they had over there, in part, is private security. It's just a piece of it. And it's just that place where now there's, people are more comfortable. There's also, through the private security that's there, there's that contact for, you know, for the community and that particular location there for the kids that come in and use, use the center. And as well, they provide, private security provides contact cards and information for those who do happen to be homeless there that frequent that park, so they can get connected to extra, you know, resources, which we'll continue to do with this program as, as well. So it's more, right now, I can tell you more anecdotal, based on the feedback that I hear frequently from the community that's out there, and also from the facilities team that works out there as well.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Okay, great. Thank you very much, you guys. First, I just want to say I really do appreciate the out-of-the-box thinking, right? I mean, I think it's one of those things, and I want to kind of comment in regards to what was said about Escalante Center. I think it was, you know, Councilmember Navarro and myself went over to Escalante Center because they were having some concerns, and we sat down and had a little meeting with everybody, and PD was there, and that was actually one of their suggestions. And it's been really well received. I know the community is very happy with it, and I know the staff at the Escalante Center. And that's something that we've continued to do, so hats off to Councilmember Navarro for, you know, pulling that meeting together and really being able to see. So I think if you got some of the statistics, you would probably realize the important impact that that individual's made there, and I think building the connections. Just, just a couple of things. I 100% agree with, I think the mayor mentioned it, that to me, one of the biggest, most important things in the, in our neighborhoods are, are parks. I think we believe that, I believe our residents believe that, they are truly the hub of our neighborhoods. And I think that our actions and the investment that we've been able to make into our parks over the last few years really shows how much they are valued and how much they are appreciated. And I think when we start getting consistent concerns about safety, that's when I think we got to start being creative and thinking outside of the box. And so for this, I'm really grateful for your efforts to try to bring something a little bit different and something, something new. I know ultimately, we would love to have more sworn officers, but obviously, that's something that's going to have to come in the budget in time to come. So I think to be able to address the immediate need, this is definitely one of the options that I think would, would really create some positive impacts in our neighborhood. So I certainly do appreciate the eyes and ears on the ground. I think that's going to be really, really, really important, one of the things to have there. I think to be able to educate people on, on code of conduct, all people on code of conduct, I think that's super important. And then to really work with enforcement, and then be able to build those connections. I think those are all the things that we really want to do, and we continue to be a compassionate community. I certainly do appreciate that and the culture of Tempe. So I do have just a couple of follow-up questions, so I'm hoping you can kind of help. You didn't really mention, like, the connection that we're going to have with the HOPE team, how they're going to work with the outreach team, the HOPE team, and then how will they, how will you decide what parks they will be deployed to? Because I know that'll probably be something, and will there be some fluctuation within the pilot to really kind of determine, you know, what parks will be addressed?
Right. To that question first, it's, it's going to be very fluid as far as the parks over the course of this, this year. There's a lot that, that goes into that. The first, the first parks that we're looking to start at is going to be Hudson and Clark Parks specifically, and that's based off of, you know, feedback from, you know, community, from Public Works, you know, to officers, you know, the homeless outreach teams. from Public Works, you know, to officers, you know, the homeless outreach teams themselves also. So there's a lot of feedback that's gone into that. And so, that's initially where we're going to start, and, and what I want to be cautious of is not expanding, like, too fast. I want to be able to make sure this is done, this is done right. And so then what we'll begin to do is expand to other parks, and part of that conversation is regular meeting, on a, regular meeting on a weekly basis, to look at the progress we're having currently, to look at other needs that we have throughout the city and other parks. And I know there's a number of parks, a number of communities that I've met with, or my peers, or Assistant Chief Humble and Chief Moyer have met with other communities who are very interested in having, you know, park security and the private security in their parks. So, so we'll work through that. It's going to be, it's going to be fluid. So we'll look at a number of different factors, which will include calls for service data, crime data, feedback from the community. And on a regular basis, weekly, the outreach teams, including our officers, and then Public Works, they have a regular conference call every single week, that they look at specific issues that they're dealing with. After that takes place, we'll have a follow-up to talk about in related, relation to that, is there anything that private security, the police department can use as a resource to help whatever those, those issues are? And so that'll expand, and so, in my mind, I already have a number of about 10 different parks, that, you know, this can be, you know, a, I think can help. I think it's important that, while I would love to put private security, you know, full-time at every park, that's just not feasible. And so it's going to be rotating, and, but I think, I think it'll help, I hope it'll help, but it'll be fluid as far as the parks that, that, that we select moving forward on a weekly basis. Specific to how they connect in with the outreach teams, major participants in this is going to be our parks officers, Officer Ellis and Officer Williams, that many of you have spent time with, and, and then also with the outreach, the, Kim Vanowiggen, I know she's on her way out, but Kim's, Kim's teams. And so we'll continue to interact with them on a regular basis, and, and exchange ideas and information. And the other thing I'm interested, too, is, as we go through this, is, what is the, what is the feeling, what is the communication amongst the population that our outreach teams are working with? So, do we have some folks in our parks that are homeless? What is their reaction to some of these steps that we're putting in place as well? That's equally as important to me as we move forward.
I, I agree, and I will, I will tell you, I, I really do believe that this is going to make a positive impact, and I think it may be, you know, a start of something new and a little bit different. So I appreciate your, your openness to kind of work through it as it, as it comes, but I think the biggest piece, too, is going to be about communication. You know, making sure everybody is communicating with every, with everybody within the task force, and then outside within the neighborhood.
I agree.
So I would definitely say, you know, keep a laser focus on that, but I definitely appreciate it, and I'm happy to, to support this agenda item tonight.
Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to reiterate, but just thank you guys. I know, obviously, we've been hit with a lot of concerns about park safety through many of years, and being able to address this, and trying to find a reasonable way to address it, and I just want to say thank you, and you guys really took charge of this, and I appreciate that, too. And it's been said about the resources and the outreach, and, you know, the big plus is, when you have an officer kind of like Escalante, you get some rapport, and you get to know the people that are in the community and in the park. That's value. I treasured that as I worked in my job in being fired, working on cast, I got to know the people, to the point where I got to know specifically their needs, and to address their needs appropriately, which is not, you know, for us, a lot of times, just going to the hospital. Now, we could actually get them to the most appropriate needs. So that's the best result that we're getting out of this potentially, of this pilot, and I hope we get good track and good data on this, because I know we're going to have a lot of outreach. This city has given probably the most outreach in terms of money throughout the valley. And I think we do treasure and we do support all the programs down from the courts, all the way to PD and FIRE, to make sure that we do take care of our citizens in various different ways. So I think this is outstanding, it's very appropriate, and thank you again for your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. And I would just add, just real quick, one of the things we've talked about with G4S is essentially almost like a 30-day roll-in, where as they go into parks, it's largely also about developing relationships with the people that are in the parks, everybody, and hearing from them. And, you know, ultimately, if we're all talking, we're all listening, we're meeting needs, we can solve this problem without having to, you know, go the enforcement route.
Councilmember Keating?
Yeah, so I have some complicated thoughts on the topic, and it's not, you know, a black and white issue to me, and we've received a lot of citizen emails and concerns heard at game night, concerns heard at neighborhood meetings, I understand that. There's been a lot of misinformation, I think, presented in some of those emails, that somehow this is going to be a cure-all. I don't think that's it. You've heard people say that we should be taking that money and putting it into homeless services, and I don't think that's quite fair or accurate, because we are, I think, more than any other city in the East Valley, I think we spend way more on human services homelessness.
Entire region.
Entire region, but, I mean, we can never do enough, right? But I had really, I mean, I've been tortured about this frankly, this weekend, and then I was able to reach out to some folks in the police department. Thank you so much for talking to me today. And I particularly want to salute Assistant Chief Carbajal for taking my concerns seriously. And through my reaching out to police, learned about the Law Frontera Impact First Aid, Mental Health First Aid Program. Because I think it's essential that these security force be trained in mental health first aid and know about behavioral health. And it's really, I mean, it's an eight-hour course, and it was a grant that was given to Law Frontera, and we have, I think, up to four trainings a year for Tempe through three years, and every police dispatcher and cop on the line is going to be getting the training in any case, but we're talking about making sure that anyone who's out of the parks as a security guard has this training, am I correct?
Yeah, and in addition to that, to those four, what Law Frontera has said is that they will come in and do an extra training specifically for us, and that's why I was referring to, that by the end of November, that that's, that's a will we should have done by then.
And those security guards are paid for the training, I assume?
Yeah, they would be, yes.
So is this going to be somehow written into the contract? I realize that this is not, we're not really making a decision about taking this approach, it's about transferring money from the general fund contingency into this program, but is the contract going to be written in such a way to ensure that there is that, at least a minimum of behavioral health training?
There's two different, the answer is yes. There's two different components to that. There's the existing contract currently, and then there's the additional RFP that's going to go in place at the first, first of the year. So specific to now, as I've interacted with G4S locally, they're very open to, you know, whatever, in fact, historically, in other positions where G4S is whatever the minimum training is that we've provided as a city, they have actually gone above that. And I expect that to be consistent here, and so we will include those specific expectations in essentially the job duties, that essentially acts as the direction for, it's not a legal contract, but as far as the expectations for those, the specific duty.
But you and I also spoke today that we want to make sure that, let's say, in the case of they need a substitute, someone needs to go to Clark Park, that someone is not sent from the security force from, from G4S and isn't trained. And I'd rather have no one go in the park that evening than send someone who hasn't been trained and meeting our high standards of training. Is that, you, you mentioned the term trust but verify. How will we verify, know that the security officers are trained?
I think there's going to be multiple layers, you know, to that. So part of it is, as we go through the training of documenting who's had that training, there's that weekly communication that we talked about, it's specifically, not only what parks we're in, but who actually is there. And then there's the billing component also, where there's a, you know, once the statement comes through for that, which comes through my office, you know, to, to, to look at that. You know, for me personally, and not just with private security, but anything else, I'd rather go short with the right people than fat with the wrong people.
Right.
And this is no different, and so you just need to know that that's, that's very important to me. It's very important to, especially as we've talked to, you know, the parks officers and the other people that are directly involved in the police department and the city's perspective, it's very important that we do this right, and we have the right people doing it, and so we'll continue to monitor that.
So with today's inclusion of the Law Frontera training, I'm, I'm willing to support this tonight, and really appreciate your assurances. It concerns me greatly. I feel like still in some ways, this is a Band-Aid, and not necessarily the solution, but I understand this as a pilot, and it's something that we need to try, but obviously, we need to look at making sure that, that the training and the actual behavior of the security guards is, is up to our standards, our high standards.
I completely, I completely agree with that, and I, I hear you, and I agree with you, and we will, as we, as we progress through the training, get this done, I will assure that all of you know that we have completed that, and then, you know, where we're at, you know, moving forward.
And we have heard from a few residents that there are concerns about G4S, and it may not be in Tempe or Arizona, but in other places in the country and the world where there's been civil rights violations. It doesn't mean it happens here, but that's a concern, and obviously, want to express that we ensure that we're treating our citizens and respecting their constitutional rights.
I fully agree, and I just also want to add to, this is, this is, you said, this is not the cure-all, and this is just a layer, this is a step, and we'll try this, and there's other pieces that the police department will continue to do. I mean, we've got overwhelmingly, the majority of actually action in the parks is from officers self-initiating the activity there, and we'll continue to do those things, but this is not the cure-all, but we'll hope it'll be just a step, a layer, to help the feeling of safety in parks, and it has to be done the right way, and you have my commitment that we're going to do everything we can to do it the right way, and trust and verify where we need to.
And thank you for having Brian Orneilis lead the training as well, and, and keep in mind that the Frontera training is free to our Tempe, Tempe officers and the guards, so that's a good thing as well.
Sure, yeah, yep.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Granville?
One quick comment, but it sounds like we're about done. I know that you mentioned that the, the RFP is going to be going out in December or so?
I think it's already out.
It's already out? Okay, then never mind, I don't have a question.
Yeah, it's, it, actually, they, I think all their bids are actually in, I'm just not involved directly with that process.
All right, I just want to circle back. I think you hear the support with this pilot program. I think it's important to note that when I've been with yourself, Commander Horn, out talking to certain neighbors in Clark Park, and I was just recently at Hudson Park, of the, some of the concerns, I think it's not the end-all cure-all. This is one piece of a larger puzzle when it comes to making sure our community is safe, for our residents to enjoy, it's something that they expect us to do. So I want to thank you for that. Is there a motion to approve item 5A6? It's been moved by Councilman Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Erdeno Savage. Please vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is item 5B8. Mr. Granville? 5B8 is...
It's a water slide.
It is award job order number 34 to foresight design and construction for the water slide installation project at the Escalante Multi-Generational Facility located at 2150 East Orange Street. Councilman Granville?
Yeah, Mayor. So when I first saw this, this is for the, the water slide installation, Escalante, which is sorely needed, for sure. And I first saw it, I saw 172,000, I was like, wow, that's a lot for a slide. And then I looked on Google and saw the slide, and it makes a lot of sense, because it's not like a slide, like, that's not what they do anymore, it's like a whole thing. Yeah, no, I'm not with the times when it comes to water slides, clearly. But I was curious why this was a JOC, particularly given that I assume that we shut down the pool for several months in the winter, and so that would seem like there wouldn't be a really narrow window for this, because the pool's not open anyway, it's not like we're cutting into open time, but, but I, you know, I don't know.
That's a question, I'll hand it over to Marilyn.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'm Marilyn Dros, I'm the city engineer. The procurement for these services came through the engineering division. At the time that we realized that we were going to need some construction company to help us, some general contractor to help us with construction of the slide, this particular contractor was already scheduled to work on the decking at Escalante, and it made sense for us to, to get pricing from them, considering they were already on site.
Actually, you can stop there, that's as much as I needed to know. Now, if you've already got somebody there doing the decking, that's exactly the reason why you would do it, so I'm happy to stop there if you want.
I have more information, but...
Okay, I'll take it.
If you don't, just stop there. All right, thank you.
When you get to yes, when you get to yes, stop talking. I've moved to approve item 5B8, Mayor.
It's been motion to approve item 5B8 by Councilman Granville, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next is the non-consent agenda. All the items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard, but not voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Item 6A is miscellaneous items, bids and contracts and resolutions. Item 6A1 is to hold a public hearing for an appeal of the Development Review Commission's decision to deny an appeal for the use permit to allow a recreational vehicle parked in the required front yard setback for the Garcia residence located at 1125 East Bishop Drive. The applicant is Patrick Garcia. I just want to make everybody know that this item is a quasi-judicial item, which means that we are, this council will act as a quasi-judicial body, hearing appeals. In this situation, the city council must conduct itself as a legislative body. Pre-meeting contact with the city council on quasi-judicial matters is prohibited, and so any materials or conversations concerning the items shall only be presented at the city council at this scheduled public hearing, this public meeting. Per the Zoning and Development Code, an appeal shall be limited to the issues raised in the petition, ZDC Section 6-803. Information that is not included in petition cannot be considered on this, tonight's agenda. Tonight's public hearing is an appeal of the Development Review Commission's decision on August 14th, 2018, to deny an appeal of the hearing officer's decision to deny a use permit to allow a recreational vehicle to be parked in the required front yard setback at the Garcia residence. And before we do, I would like to have our city attorney, she would like to, oh, no, that's on 6B2, excuse me, that's the next item. But I'd like to ask the appellant, Mr. Garcia, if you could please come forward and make your presentation. You're welcome.
Good evening. Obviously, I'm the resident of 1125 East Bishop Drive. I don't know how much you've read about this, or if you've read all the prior stuff, but basically, I've lived in that neighborhood for 23 years, have had that trailer there parked in that same spot for about 10 of those, because I bought it in 2008, it's an '07. And recently, apparently, a neighbor of mine had a neighbor dispute with somebody else down the street over some loose dogs, and he had happened to have a trailer, and they, he complained on him. So, and in the course of that, somehow or another, I got cited as well. Where was I going with that? So, I had since gone out and gotten, got a petition, went around the neighborhood, was asking, were asking people if they had an issue with the trailer, where it is. I think I've met, well, anyway, go back to the petition. I, I was able to find that original complaint, and he actually told me the whole story. And he said, yeah, I never complained on you, so apparently, my trailer was a non-issue. I even, I even got a signature from our neighborhood association president, and he didn't have an issue with it. He said, we've never had, I have no issue with it. And that petition was presented in the last hearing. I said, I, my house is made in, it was, it was, it was built in 1963, so it's kind of an old home. Obviously, the trailers were a lot smaller back then. My trailer's a little tall, I use it for hunting, use it for taking my kids out camping. I bought it a little larger to have a toilet and whatnot, because I want to take my, you know, my wife, my daughters, and obviously, they don't want to go use their outdoors. So that's why I bought a little, that particular one, because before that, I had a pop-up trailer, but, anyway. So I would have to cut the overhang of this house, because of the, because of the age of the home, I'd have to cut the overhang about three feet by six feet back to be able to get it back into that RV section, which is, why, well, going back, I originally bought this house back in 95 because of it, it had the RV parking, and at the time, I had a pop-up trailer, so no problem getting that back. And then obviously, I upgraded, and low and behold, I thought it was going to fit, but the thing has like, like a bubble on top for the... has like, like a bubble on top for the restroom and some other stuff on top that I wasn't really aware of until I actually started hitting it and then was kind of stuck, stuck at that point. So I, you know, parked it right up front. And, sorry, I'm going to go through some of these points here. So some of the issues that were brought up last time is that, you know, that, let me just start on some of my points. I like to, I like the fact that all of you have said that family is a big factor in Tempe. I want to stay in Tempe. I would like to remain in Tempe. I'm trying, I'm actually looking at upgrading my home. I'm having another addition to my home, another addition to my household. So I need to, you know, expand the house. I want to stay in Tempe. I love, I love the community. The only problem is, is I don't want to get rid of the trailer because I actually, like I said, I hunt and fish and I spend, do a lot of vacationing within Arizona, which actually, I think, gives back to the community, the state, plus teaches a lot of good family values. I don't want to get rid of the trailer, but I may have to, depending. Or I was told by some of the development folks that I could actually park it sideways in front of my house. And I would be in code. And that seems kind of silly. I'm trying to do this above board. I'm trying to apply for the permit, for the use permit, which is allowed by the code. You know, that's why I've got, the first, the first hearing that I had, they didn't know what they could, could or could not do. So that really wasn't, it really didn't count as anything. The second, the second hearing had a lot of people that, you know, mixed feelings about it, I guess. So thus, now I'm here. That's how I ended up in front of you. Another issue with pushing my RV back is actually, like I said, the house is an older home and I have an, I have an outside laundry room that I have to go through my garage to get. And I might fix that later on. If I decide to actually stay at home, I'm probably going to fix that. But for now, I have to, it might block my laundry room. I think I'd addressed all the issues before as far as, you know, that's not going to bring property values down. Since '08, I kind of did my homework. I've seen that a lot of you actually live in my neighborhood. And a lot of you have purchased your homes either after I'd, after I'd already bought this and parked it there. So obviously, that wasn't a consideration. It wasn't a hideous thing. You guys didn't pass by and go, you know, this trailer's, I don't want to buy in this neighborhood. There wasn't an explosion of, I think that was one of the concerns is that they thought, if you granted me a use permit, that all of a sudden, there was going to be an explosion of trailers. And to get this use permit, look what I've had to go through just to try and be above board. You know, not playing the cat and mouse game, not hiding it, bringing it back, letting them cite me again, moving it, bringing it back, you know, that, that cat and mouse game, which a lot of people do. And I'm trying not to do that. And you have the video thing? I mean, it worked. You would think we're talking about this, you know. You would think we're talking about this. And that's not at all what it is. And, you know, when I pass by, like I said, when I pass by a house and I see somebody with a boat, with an RV, what that says to me is that says you have a healthy family unit. Tells me that they're doing things as a family unit. They're going out, they're, they're hunting, they're fishing, they're camping. It tells me, that's what it tells me. Okay? And, you know, like I said, you know, you'd think that you're talking about one of these things here, you know, or, you know, or a giant monstrosity like that, or, or like, like I said, they want, they want me to park it sideways. Let me go back to this kind of showing. And then, this is, this is off of Google Maps from last year. But, let me see that now. That's, that's basically where it's at. I also, the trailer where it has, where it is, has actually helped me quite a bit over the years. I've had a lot of issues with frat houses. And I don't know if, like I said, I don't know if any of you lived in my neighborhood, but frat houses, I've had a lot of issues with them. This particular house next door to me, I've had the paddy wagon there. I've had, I've had all kinds of issues. Recently, it got purchased by somebody else. And I've gotten to know the neighbor real well. And he's trying to get a family in there. He has no issue. He was supposed to have sent something via email to you guys, but his name is, last name of Spock is the owner. He said no issues with it. And I've read some of the other stuff that was sent, I guess by some people that don't live in the neighborhood that are rent, that have rental homes. Not to bash anybody because I know you guys have rental homes there, too. But he, this person was saying something about, you know, that he was talking outside of his zone, basically, because he doesn't live next to me. This person, this person here does. This is my direct, these are my direct neighbors. I got petitions from all my direct neighbors that are impacted by this.
There are neighbors that you got petitions from, the neighbors, they all supported you?
Yes. I only had one that was not supportive. And it was an elderly lady that thought I was, thought I was talking about parking on the street. Because I put like a, matter of fact, I, it should have been in the last stuff that was given out, but I do have, I think I have a top.
We have a couple people that want to ask you a question.
And then that's just a view from downtown streets. It shows that it's not like, you know, blocking the roadway or anything.
Vice Mayor QB has a question for you. Then Councilman Navarro, then Councilmember Keating.
Hi, Mr. Garcia. I have a question because I read through the DRC minutes and there was this issue about having the hitch going over the sidewalk.
Fix it.
Yeah. So it didn't, I looked at all the Google images last night and didn't even see him going back a bunch of years. So was the hitch ever, it's fixed now, though?
Well, apparently, the last, I just recently used it. It's a, it's a task every time because you have to sit there. I don't know if you have like a semi or a trailer. This one's, you know, I have to sit there and back it up and back it up. And then I'm hitting the house. And then I have to have somebody back there. Something, you're too close to the house, you're too close to the wall. You know, I don't want to go over into my neighbor's slab. So it's a task to get it in. Apparently, it was like slightly over the, the little...
So, yeah, so...
It was.
That was a big concern of the DRC. So I'm glad to see that.
I readjusted it.
So the other thing was Commissioner Angie Thornton suggested, why not back it up since it's two levels to the trailer and the lower level wouldn't have to, wouldn't involve cutting through the roof? Is that a possibility?
She had talked about possibly hooking it, because I would have to hook it up to a truck and drive that truck into that backyard area.
Right. So that's not possible.
No, that would stay, that would end up staying there.
Okay. Just wanted to ask.
That truck would be useless. Yeah. That couldn't work. Yeah.
Thank you.
It was a good, it was a good thought, but it wouldn't work. So I don't know if you guys wanted to see the petition.
Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. I appreciate you coming in and sharing us the situation. And I can just say, I don't know about the council members, I've heard enough. I think our code compliance is there to ensure that we're kind of good neighbors. We don't let our property get out of line. We don't have any eyesores in the community. None of your neighbors have complained about this. So in my mind, if your immediate neighbors are okay with it, I'm okay with it. As long as someone doesn't complain about it, I have no problem with it staying there.
Right. And I know the way the city works, that if something does come up in the future, you can always readdress it, you know. And I have no issues with that. Like I said, I'm going to try and rectify it in the modification of the home because we even looked at, you know, possibly, not me going at my overhang with a saw, but actually having a contractor do it properly to maybe get it further back at a later point.
Councilman Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. You stated that you have petitions from everyone on your street?
Yes.
Okay. And then...
It was in, it was in the last hearing that I put in as, I guess, I don't want to say evidence, this is criminal, but I mean, it was a, yeah.
I should say. And then you're, so I'm clear, you're also stating that you're trying to do a remodel. And with the remodel, you're potentially going to have the ability to push the trailer even further behind the fence? Or is that a goal?
Yes. Because like, like I said, right now, I don't know if you, you have some of the older homes. Mine has that exterior garage door and an exterior laundry room. And to push that back, it would probably cover both and we wouldn't be able to actually get out and do the laundry.
Right. And then your trailer's how long?
It's 21 feet livable with a nine-foot front deck.
How total, total, so?
Total 30 feet.
30 feet. Okay. So you're talking 30 feet. And then the question would be for the, probably the city attorney. So I, believe me, I get what you're saying, that's all I get. But, and I'll just be frank. The one concern I might have is, I say, yeah, you know what, you're good. But then the next guy that comes up and has, has the same issue, that's, that's my only concern. And I know where you live, I live right down the street from you and stuff. And we, you know, unless someone, kind of like a victim of it, so to speak, someone was complaining about something, you got cited because our codes say this. And if we go around that old neighborhood, I, we could have violations up and down the street.
Well, I last counted, I counted, and this is a while back, I went through and just, I had, I saw 27 trailers, boats. There was even an airplane once in the neighborhood. I mean, you know, a Piper Cub, somebody had in front of their house.
Right. So I guess, I'm just, I need to, I'm going to think about it just a little bit. I just, that's my only heartache is, yeah, no one would have said anything. Business as usual for 10 years. But because...
Again, I'm coming close to about $1,400 in fees just to come be before all of you. All the hoops and time and effort that I've had to put into this, I doubt somebody is going to go through all that unless, you know, it's a special thing.
Right.
And on top of that, development had told me, they have issued these in the past. The younger one had said, yeah, we've never done this before. The zoning person had said, I don't remember one being issued. But I talked to the older development, the senior development person, and they go, yeah, we've issued a few of those in the past.
Yeah.
So apparently, nothing has happened. There hasn't been an explosion of trailers and boats or whatever that was, use permits were for at that time.
Right.
So again, I don't think that would be an issue.
I'll listen a little bit more to what everyone else has said. I mean, I noticed that for your trailer size, about $66 a month, you could have it stored. That's at one location. I, I know, because I had to fight this because I lived in HOA. And obviously, I could not do this. So the city's so-called the HOA.
And that's specifically why I chose this neighborhood 23, 23 years ago. Because I don't want, I don't like HOAs. I'm not an HOA-type person. Don't want it. And yet, another thing, and the fact that I'm not a zoning specialist, I'm not a contractor, these are one of those things that nobody ever tells you about.
Yeah.
You know, you go out and buy something and you figure it's my property, it's my parking lot. The house specifically has an RV parking space. So you would assume, I mean, I know, I know the old acronym for the assume thing, but you would assume that it's usable for that purpose. And that's exactly what I've been doing for the last, like I said, 10 years.
Councilman Granville, then Councilman Adams?
Yeah, I tend to agree with Councilmember Keating on this one. You know, I live not too far from you. And I specifically bought in that neighborhood for two reasons. Number one, it was close to my best friend's house. I could walk home. And number two, it didn't have an HOA. And so if the neighbors don't have a problem with it, I don't see a problem with it. Although I'm certainly cognizant of the idea that there's precedent issues. And so I actually have a question for our city attorney about that, which hopefully will clear up my last doubt on this. Does, assuming that we issue this permission, does it stay with the individual or does it run with the land? In that, if he moves someday, does the person who buys it get this right?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is an application, or actually an appeal from an application for a use permit. So if you were to allow a use permit, it could be with conditions or without. But that use permit is specific to the action requested to this property, specific to the trailer at issue, specific to the property at issue.
Is it, is it specific to this property and the owner or just the property?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at. If he moves out, can the next person put in a different trailer of similar type?
A use permit would be specific to this owner.
To this owner. So if he moves out, the right to the trailer goes away?
Well, and again, if there are conditions that the council wishes to consider imposing, you would have the ability to revoke the use permit if those were not followed.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out if it runs with the land. And it sounds like what you're telling me is the answer is no.
A use permit is not a permanent right. It applies specifically to this application and this use of that land for that duration.
That really doesn't answer my question yet.
It does not run with the land.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out. Thank you.
Yes, I'm concerned that we're going down a slippery slope because it is a code violation. And when I was out canvassing, I heard a lot about trailers and RVs being parked in people's houses. So I'm really concerned about us going down this road based on the feedback that I received. So, but I do appreciate your position. And you've had it for 10 years. And it's kind of a bummer. But I, it is a code violation. And I just can't support a code violation.
Councilmember Keating, then Councilmember QB, and then Councilmember Erdeno Savage?
I have a question. It may be for the city attorney, it may be for other staff. Can we not approve this use permit based on there's no complaints that come in? So if a complaint comes in tomorrow, we revoke it. But as long as he can keep it there tonight, is that not an avenue we could go down? It sounds like none of his neighbors minded being there. I really think that, you know, the codes are to ensure that we're all good neighbors, that they compel us to be good neighbors. If his neighbors aren't, if it's not an issue with them, I just don't see why, you know, we would, we would jam them up at all. So I mean, is it not a possibility to say, we approve this, but as long as your neighbors are okay with it, continue to be okay with it, it will stay approved. But the second that they're not, we can revoke it?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Typically, the condition would be more in line with what the Zoning and Development Code sets out as specific parameters for the use permit, which would be an intensification of use or any kind of nuisance like odor or noise or that kind of thing that come from the property. One of the suggested conditions was that the recreational vehicle would not be used as habitable space when parked in the designated area. So that kind of violation, it's not necessarily tied to the opinion of the neighbors, although public opinion is something that Arizona law would allow you to consider.
So it sounds like you're saying that we could indeed revoke it should one of his neighbors complain, should we approve it tonight?
Correct. So long as the use permit is approved with specific conditions.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor QB?
Just to clarify something, you said, Councilmember Adams, this isn't about a code violation. If you look just at a, it's a code violation. It is, but he's applied for a special use permit. In other words, to get a variance from that code. And I feel you've made the case in terms of, this is a quasi-judicial matter. We have to evaluate it on four criterion. And one of them, does it devalue the neighborhood? And it's been here 10 years. And it seems like the neighborhood values are going up. And does it cause destruction to the character of the neighborhood? Well, there are a number of RVs in the neighborhood. So it doesn't seem to be a departure from the rest of the neighborhood. And that, again, goes to the issue of the neighbors not being against this. So, I mean, I'm going to support, I make sure I phrase this right, but support the use permit or repealing, is it repealing the decision of the hearing officer? I'm not sure how we'll, we'll put forward the motion. But I'm in favor of allowing the use permit for this site.
Councilmember Erdeno Savage?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I mean, Mr. Garcia, I appreciate you wanting, you know, being here in the city of Tempe for as long as you have. I mean, obviously, there's few of us that live in that neighborhood. And certainly appreciate those individuals that, you know, really value family and neighborhood and things like that. And I think that's really good. And for me, I mean, most people know I'm not much of an exception maker, pretty much ever. And I always really am very concerned about setting a precedent and the concerns that may have. So, I mean, my thought process was, well, you know, how much bigger is that trailer than the original 21 feet? But, you know, for me to go from 21 feet to nine more feet, that's pretty significant to create a new precedent.
It's a deck.
I understand. It doesn't matter because I have to look at it from the next person that's going to come knocking at the door. And then now, do I have to judge and say, oh, well, yours doesn't look as nice and new. So we shouldn't allow a use permit or give you an exception. So, you know, for me, I think if our, our...
So, you know, for me, I think if our codes are set for a reason, and if they're not appropriate, then we need to look at the code so they are appropriate for everybody. So I think if that's something that we want to address in the future, if maybe 21 feet's not the right number, then that's not the right number. But, you know, for me in this aspect, I mean, we put codes in place for a reason, to make sure that our neighborhoods look the way we would like them to look. And if our codes aren't up to par and they need to be revised, I 100% think that that's what we need to do. But, you know, for me, to set a new precedent, that I think for the next person to come around, it's gonna be really tough, because I really kind of was hoping that it would work out until I learned how big it was. And I know you're saying that's a little bit different, and I get it. But, you know, for me, when you go from 21 feet to 30 feet, that's really significant. So it's hard for me to do that, and I would certainly support us looking at the codes, if that's something that we want to look at in the future. But I do agree with some of the concerns of setting a precedent, like Councilmember Navarro and Councilmember Adams suggested. So I won't be supporting it tonight.
And again, you're not setting precedents. Like I said, the senior development person had already said that they have issued variances, just like this one, in the past. Now, I didn't go through their records or request those, but, you know, I'm going off of this man's being there for over, you know, 20-something years.
Well, it might have happened before me, I don't know, but I won't disagree with you. So, but anyway, that's how I personally feel, but I appreciate you being here tonight.
Councilman Navarro?
Thanks, Mayor. Ryan, I mean, with this case, have we accepted different variances, something similar to this?
Mayor, Councilmember Navarro, there have been several use permit cases in the past, and each case is evaluated on its own merits and evaluation based on the location. I'm sure there have been use permits approved in the past. Recent cases have not supported the use permit for concerns that this will create a precedence in some of the surrounding neighborhoods. Some have had examples and justification that there was enough shielding or coverage from an RV in the location that might have additional landscape foliage. But each case is evaluated on its own merits.
And I kind of asked that, because I think to your point, you said, hey, listen, you can park your RV in your backyard, but it isn't against code if you can see it? But if you had foliage, we took care of it. Is that somewhat of a variance?
As long as the RV is not in the required 20-feet front yard, or if there was a street-side yard. It's allowed to be within the rear. It can be viewed from the street if it's visible above the height of the wall. It's allowed.
And I'm really battling this one, because it's not, you know, specifically your trailers. It's the fact of the precedence, and I'm trying to decipher that. And I know this is a variance for your property, and maybe my question was maybe asked by Councilmember Keating, and maybe I get clarification. If we granted a variance, and he was able to park his trailer there, if he had a complaint from a neighbor about his trailer, can we revoke that variance then?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So long as the city council approves this appeal, and it's approval of an appeal for a use permit, with conditions, one of those conditions being that you would receive no other complaint from the neighbors, if that somehow was, if a complaint came in, then you would be able to revoke the use permit, if that was one of the conditions that was imposed.
And that would be, basically, we'd have to go through council, it'd be a staff, administrative?
I believe that is correct.
Councilmember Adams and Councilmember QB, and I have a question for our attorney.
Well, you're relying on the neighborhood, or neighbors, to complain then, in this situation. And a lot of neighbors don't like to complain about their other neighbors. So that's, I think, putting a lot of pressure on the other neighbors to come forward.
They can do it anonymously, just like the other one did, through the computers system. It's very simple.
So I'd like to direct this question to our city attorney. So I was under the understanding that this is quasi-judicial matter, and we're supposed to consider four criteria. Would you mind reading those criteria, so we can be very careful that we're answering those questions?
That's what I was gonna ask, can you explain?
Because we're talking about a lot of other things that don't relate to that.
Sure, thank you. I will go ahead and read, these are the criteria set out in the use permit in the zoning and development code. This is Section 6308E. Any significant increase in vehicular or pedestrian traffic. Nuisance arising from the emission of odor, dust, gas, noise, vibration, smoke, heat or glare at a level exceeding that of ambient conditions. Number three, contribution to the deterioration of the neighborhood or to the downgrading of property values, which is in conflict with the goals, objectives or policies for rehabilitation, redevelopment, or conservation as set forth in the city's adopted plans or the general plan. Number four, compatibility with existing surrounding structures and uses. An adequate control of disruptive behavior, both inside and outside the premises, which may create a nuisance to the surrounding area or general public.
I contend that Criteria 3 and 4 are not met in opposing the use permit, so that's why I'm gonna support the use permit.
Say that again?
I believe that Criteria 3 or 4, one is to contributing to the deterioration of the neighborhood or downgrading the neighborhood, is not met. And number four, compatibility with existing neighborhood uses, is not met. So that's why I can't support, I want to support the use permit in this instance. Sorry if I misstated that.
What did she say?
I'm saying it doesn't affect the property values, there's already existing neighborhood, existing structures, existing RV use in the neighborhood, and it's been there for 10 years. So the idea that it's contributing to deteriorating neighborhood doesn't make sense.
One other small little thing. Remember, I told you I was using it, it also helps me to kind of barrier myself, my family from the neighborhood, or the neighbors and the kids from the other homes, frats. I've had multiples, now apparently, the house, two houses west of me, apparently just got purchased by a halfway, a halfway house company, and they're planning on putting a drug and rehab home. Yeah, because I went to, I was checking my kid on my phone, and it said drug and rehab, and then I looked into it, and they just purchased this home and are revamping it, I guess. So, again, sort of using it as a barrier.
Fair one? Councilman Navarro?
Yeah, if, just listening to the criteria that we had to go under, and with what has been presented and said, I would make a proposal to grant, but if the, he does get a complaint from within his neighborhood or street, I don't know the clarity of area, I assume it's the street, then the use permit would go away. And as long as his hitch is not in the sidewalk, you know, I could go for that. Is that a motion? I'm sorry, I have just a motion to approve use permit with criteria, if he does have a complaint from a neighbor within his area, and I assume his street, the use permit would be revoked.
A second.
Wait, before we do that, we still have to have public comment. I still have to, go out there. So there's been a motion, and there's been a second, to approve the denial of a use permit? I mean, what I mean is, the opposite, I'm trying to say the opposite. There is a motion and a second to approve the appeal of the denial. Okay, with that being said, I do have one question. In some of the criteria, this is our city attorney, you talk about, I don't think residents, you know, they have the support of it, and I understand, and I'm sure you're frustrated, because it's been here for 10 years. But there's a bigger issue that we're gonna be grappling with, with setting a precedent. But if, just because people approve it, that's not part of the criteria. Is there other, as Vice Mayor QB mentioned, there's other places on this street that has RVs? In the neighborhood? Right, okay. You know, to me, I mean, I grew up in that neighborhood. My parents still live there. I was just, it was weekend, but I will tell you that it's, setting up, appealing this is really setting a bad precedent, based on what our code and ordinances are, to help with maintaining the quality of life and the vibrancy of our community. You mentioned something that you're looking at modifying your house, because you want to stay there?
Yes.
With, on the property, that by modifying, you'd be able to park the trailer in the side more?
Yes, because then I would, then I would enclose that laundry room, get rid of those outside doors. That way, when it's pushed back, it wouldn't be an access issue. And plus, professionally doing the overhang.
And what's preventing that from taking place, if you had a commitment for that?
Right now? It's because, like I said, I'm having an addition to my household, and it's either I move, because the house isn't big enough, or I add footage to the home. And that being part of, I would put that into it as well.
Okay, I mean, I feel for you. We have had some, you know, every issue is a case-by-case issue. I'm torn on this one as well, but just based on the precedent that this could set for the rest of the neighborhood, it is troublesome to me, unless we could come to some agreement where you can have it there until you can figure out a way to push it back even further, so it's not as obtrusive in the front of your house.
What about a use permit for a year?
I'm gonna go to see if there's any public comment. So, thank you, Mr. Garcia, for a second. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, and this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this item? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion of it. There's been a motion and a second, so I will go ahead and call for the vote. Yes? Do you want to repeat the motion?
Could I please, just to make sure that I got the additional conditions of approval down? Because you said two different ways, I want to make sure I understood this.
So I made a motion of approval, however, with a stipulation, though, if he does have a complaint from a neighbor, and I don't know what the criteria of his street or his area, which would classify as a complaint, then the use permit would be pulled.
Can we get that clarification?
That's a legal...
Our attorney?
Situations, Mr. Mayor, that we would like for Ryan to maybe put something in writing, so you can read it back to you, so that we know that the condition is written in a way that reflects what is the expressed intent of the one who moved for the motion.
The reason why I say that, because I don't know if it's, you know, you deteriorate, if someone's saying you're deteriorating the neighborhood, well, it could be the street over, vice versa, I don't... In the block, so I'm just trying to get clarity on that.
Yeah, Mayor, councilmembers, certainly we can either use the notification outreach radius, which is 600 feet, or identify specifically the area segment along Bishop Drive as an area that may impact resident concerns for this location. I'll also clarify, too, that by stipulating for a revoking of the use permit, it's not automatically granted. It would have to go back to, through a revocation process, a public hearing, in order to officially revoke that use permit. And so it would require, then, a hearing at that time, if there was alleged complaints from a resident.
I'm sorry, so clarity, does the use permit comes every year?
Has come back to us.
Has come back to us?
If there is a sought-to-revoke the use permit as a result of a complaint.
So it's not an administrative deal, it basically comes back to us?
Correct.
Judy?
I thought that it actually came back to, before a hearing officer, that there would be a hearing.
Apparently, yes.
Apparently.
There's only been a motion and a second.
Friendly amendment.
I can amend the motion, could I not?
Yes.
Okay, because if I amend the motion to things with either 600-foot radius, and then to have a year stipulation?
A year to do what?
A year just to evaluate? I don't know if that's, how does this happen? A year to have him, if he's gonna do more renovations to his house, does that give him time to try to do the renovations, or to figure out what to do with the trailer? And that's, I don't know how I put it in a motion, but...
Mayor and councilmembers, your condition could be a set time period for him to come back and make those repairs or modifications to his home that he spoke to you about. So whatever would be an appropriate time, and I would defer to Ryan on that. Maybe a year is not enough time. The motion could be, you know, approval of the denial to allow the use permit, with the conditions, one of which would be to allow a certain amount of time for him to complete those modifications. That's completely up to you.
Certainly, taking into consideration that the resident has had the RV for 10 years, I think one-year timeframe would be reasonable.
All right.
Councilmember Keating?
Well, do we know, I mean, does the applicant have any plans to modify his house to fit the RV?
No.
He said he's gonna modify his house, but not, did he say that? I'm sorry, I must have missed that.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes, I just had a contractor come out and look at the home, and basically, we talked specifically about working that into it.
So is a year an acceptable timeframe for you, then?
It's better than nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
Can I ask Ryan a question? Ryan, are you familiar with whether RVs lower property values of homes in neighborhoods? Because the research I've seen says it does.
Certainly, typically, there have been concerns with the use of RV parking in the required front yard. We even require a use permit if someone wants to enclose or create their garage into livable space. That also requires the same use permit requirement, because it's a permanent vehicle in the front yard location. There's several different factors. I, you know, one could opine that, yes, that could be a concern for devaluing properties. It certainly comes down to whether or not they feel the, that whether the RV itself creates some visual blight or concerns for deterioration in that location.
In general, appraisers say that RVs in front of houses lower the property values for the people that are trying to sell their houses.
That has been staff's concerns in the past.
Yes, thank you. Show me, show me the money.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to have a use permit...
You wanna? Just withdraw it, and redo it?
Withdraw, I'm just gonna withdraw it.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna redo it now. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the use permit to overrule the denial, am I right? And then to have a 600-foot radius of, if he does have a complaint within that 600-feet radius, then the use permit goes away. In addition, this will stand for a year.
With modifications to that?
With modifications to that, as he states.
Mr. Mayor, just, because I know Brian's writing all this down, are you saying that stand for a year means that he would have to complete the modifications to his house to allow for the legal parking without a use permit within a year? And at that point, the use permit lapses? So you're only granting it for a year? Or are you saying that in a year, that there would be some sort of review by staff, or I'm just...
No, I guess it's for a year.
One year, that's your motion, is for a year only?
Just one year.
Okay.
Is there a second? It's been seconded by Vice Mayor QB. You know, for the discussions, please vote. That motion passes 4 to 3. Great job. Next is Item 682. Is to award a one-year contract with four options, four optional one-year renewals for Ballard Holding Corp., doing business as Ballard Equipment and Freight Line of Arizona for the purchases of refuse vehicles. Is there any comments or discussion on Item 682? Seeing none, is there a motion on Item 682? Moved by Vice Mayor QB, seconded by Councilmember Granville. Please vote. That motion passes.
You, Keating had to go.
Not working.
I did that. Do it again.
That motion passes 6 to 0, with Councilmember Keating absent. Next, Item 684 is to approve, or 683 is to approve... Next, item 6A4 is to appro, or 6A3 is to approve a one-year contracts with four one-year renewal options for HSWRR Incorporated, Doing Business as Roto-Rooter, New Flow Services, Phoenix, and RKS Plumbing and Mechanical Incorporated for plant, for plumbing work associated with the Service Line Protection Program and Water Sewer Program. Is there any comments or discussion from council on item 6A3? Councilman Granville?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. You know, I just want to actually give kudos to staff. One of the things that we've talked about off and on over the years as a council and with staff is the idea of who's the customer. And it would have been very easy for staff to say, we've, the slip program's great, by the way. If you don't know about it, you should do it. It's the cheapest, best thing you could ever invest in. It would have been very easy for our staff to say, well, everything's worked fine for us, let's just approve this. But when I asked that question, the answer I got was, was exactly the answer I was hoping for and I was really excited to get it. And what they actually said was this, engineer issues a survey to every resident after every project is completed. And then, based on those surveys from residents, is what we've decided to keep or drop vendors for. And I think that shows a lot of insight into understanding that when we're serving at these conduits for services, the city's not exactly the client, that the resident who uses that service, whether it's the yard service, or the house painting service, or our legal services, they're really the client. And I really appreciate engineering going out and making sure that these were, were companies that our residents had positive experiences with.
Okay. Is there a motion on item 6A3? It's been moved by Vice Mayor Cubey. Is there a second?
No, other, there's others down the street.
Is there a second? Second to Councilmember Granville. Please vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next, item 6A4 is to approve utilization of a one-year City of Glendale contract with Badger Meter, Inc. For the purchase of 5/8 through 1-inch lead-free residential water meters and replacement parts. There's been any comments, but there's been a motion by Councilmember Arredondo, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Any other discussions? Please vote. That motion passes seven to zero. The next section of our non-consent is our ordinance and items for introduction in first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearing and votes of these items is scheduled for November 15, 2018. Item 6B1, which is ordinance and items to, for introduction in first hearing, is introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending the Tempe City Code, Chapter 13, Article 2, relating to elections, campaign finance, by making conforming changes and technical corrections to various city code sections. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for November 15, 2018. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none? Close that portion. Next item is item 6B2 is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending the Tempe City Code, Chapter 16A, Licenses and Businesses Regulations Relating to Dealers and Used Goods. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for November 15, 2018. This is a public hearing item. I do have one card for this. Mr. Ronald Mahan? Please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Excuse me, Mayor, may I just make a brief comment?
Yes.
Thank you. To clarify the record, it was brought to our attention, bless you, that we inadvertently referenced Section 16A-33 instead of the correct section, which is 16A-34, on page 13, which is Section 16A-32A3. Thank you.
All right. Yes, Mr. Mahan?
Sorry, I forgot what you wanted me to.
Oh, you, you wanted to speak. You wanted to speak on this item?
Yes, you wanted me to say what? My name and address?
Your name and address, yeah.
Okay, the address I wrote on there was a store address, but my name is Ronald Mahan II. Live at 1676 East Bridgeport Parkway in Gilbert. But I'm here speaking on behalf of Play It Against Sports in Tempe, Arizona. You guys are introducing this new code that will change how we interact as far as reporting goods that we've purchased. And we've been working with the Tempe Police Department on this and having a lot of good feedback, back and forth. However, one item we thought of a little bit late as far as getting it in before this meeting. And we wanted to see if we could get exercise machines included as furniture. Furniture is excluded currently from the 20-day hold, which we went from a 10-day hold to a 20-day hold if this passes. 20-day hold is a lot for a store of our size to hold big pieces of equipment that in the 60 years combined of the four stores this owner has had throughout the valley, has not had one come up as stolen or any issue with. So we're trying to see if we can get that excluded on the 20-day hold due to the fact that no one ever wants to come in and take an elliptical from somebody's house and try to sell it because it's way more work than it's ever gonna be worth to somebody. So we were just seeing if we can get that added. I know in Gilbert, we worked with them, and that was added in their pond ordinance. Other cities just have furniture. We didn't have businesses in those cities, so we didn't work with them at all. But a lot of other cities also still have the 10-day hold. We've been talking with them. We understand the 20-day hold is a pretty firm item that needs to stay, and we're, we're fine with that. For most of our items, it's not an issue. They're smaller items, we can kind of store them in the back. As far as machines, though, they're so big and talking almost a month of it sitting on the floor and not being able for us to turn it over, try to create any more money to even buy stuff from other customers that want to sell stuff because we just don't have the floor space. So we were hoping that that could be put, put in as an addition, as a possible exception.
Councilman Granville?
First off, I'd like to say that for the vast majority of people, their exercise equipment is furniture.
Yes.
It's where, it's where the clothes get dried, right? No, not you, not you, Vice, uh, Councilmember Arredondo Savage, I'm saying most people. The question I had maybe for either yourself or for PD.
Yeah.
Is obviously nobody's gonna, you know, they're never, they're gonna walk out with your elliptical or with your, with your, I just imagine somebody like wheeling out your, your machine you jog on.
Yeah.
But are there smaller, higher value items that would inadvertently fall under the category of exercise equipment?
We're not, sorry, if I said exercise equipment, I meant exercise machines.
Oh, okay.
Such as treadmills, ellipticals, exercise bikes.
I'm just trying to think if there's something that's like a $400 thing this big that I'm not thinking of.
Yes, yes, that, that I always would say would fall under exercise equipment. There's not really anything that's $400 worth that's small. There's things that are $100, maybe $150 items that would fall under that. But as far as the high-ticket items, it is those big massive machines, the weight benches, the treadmills, ellipticals. And we'd be fine with working with PD before it comes to a vote as far as classifying what those machines were that we were looking for and see if they found that acceptable as well.
It's about the floor space, it's not.
Yes.
So you wouldn't even mind having high-value, low, small-sized machines excluded?
Correct, yeah, we already, I mean, we already report, as it is, I mean, we report all those machines and I believe we still would have to. It just keeps us exempt from the 20-day hold on those big, big massive items, yeah. I mean, they weigh several hundred pounds, it's really mostly impractical, I would think. Yeah, and honestly, off the top of my head, I've worked there for 17 years. I can't think of something that we would classify as a machine that would meet that criteria as far as exercise machines go. But, I mean, like I said, we're welcome to work with PD on that. They've been receptive to our suggestions so far, so no issues with that.
Councilman Navarro?
I'd like to hear from Chief Carver Hall, any concerns?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. We do appreciate the comments that were made here today. From the inception, when we first started looking at making changes to the ordinance, we went out of our way to make sure that we involved all the stakeholders. We went to every pond secondhand dealer in the city of Tempe that we could find and invited them to a meeting that we held on May 10. And out of the 30, 31-ish establishments that we had in our community, we had about 12 show up for that meeting on May 10. Talked about the changes and what we were looking to do in our ordinance and got some feedback at that time. And as this process has gone on, we kept an email distribution list and sent out drafts of the ordinance as it, as it changed to make sure that our stakeholders had an opportunity to, to take a look at that and weigh in on it. On October 9, we sent a draft, and we did get some feedback from Play It Against Sports specific to how those changes were gonna impact their business. The comment that they made to us is, the way the ordinance was written, it was essentially gonna make them closer doors. So that afternoon, myself and one of our lieutenants went down and met with the management of Play It Against Sports, heard their concerns, and made some pretty significant changes to the ordinance, which is what you have before you now. One of the most significant changes in the ordinance is, it's gonna be on page four, and it's gonna be 16A3, letter B3, at the bottom of page four. And that is specific that that was added after our meeting with Play It Against Sports. We went out and looked at some of the other cities we're doing to try to find something that would work for everybody involved. And so that section talks about how items of less than $50 are not reportable unless they're one of these listed items. And one of them is items with serial numbers. And so the equipment we're talking about typically has a serial number, I believe. And so we would have to go back and address that. Perhaps one of the things we can do is, is work with the store to come up with a weight requirement. You know, if it's something that's less than 100 pounds, then it has to be reportable or some, something along those lines that address the concerns that are being addressed here. But I think we can come to some sort of resolution that will work for everybody.
All right, thank you.
This is postponed?
No, this is only first hearing.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank, do you have any, anything else you want to say? Well, thank you, and I appreciate your story because I frequently. But I would tell you, I, I think, and listen to Assistant Chief Carver Hall, this only, this is only the first public hearing, so if we can help address some of those by the time you come back for the second public hearing, let, I think, let us know if there's anything else you need. Any other comments on this item from any, anyone from the council? Seeing none? Moving on to the next item, ordinance and items for second hearing and final adoption. The first item in this section is 6C1, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing a power distribution easement for electrical power supply purposes on city-owned land located at Quanus Park near the intersection of Mill Avenue and All America Way, and authorizing the city engineer or her designated to execute such easement and related documents. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in council wishing to address this? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none? Is there any comments or discussion from council? If not, can I get a motion on item 6C1? It's been moved by Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next item is item 6C2, is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located at 2102 East Rio Slata Parkway. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this on item 6C2? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none? Close that portion. Is there comments or discussion or a motion on item 6C2? It's been moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Please vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next is current events and announcements. Is there any announcements from the council? Start with Councilmember Keating.
Nothing from me, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I've got just a couple of things to announce. I think Mr. Wolf's gonna put a couple of slides up for me. I'm not sure which one he's gonna start with. Oh, yes, the Tempe Book Festival. I think we all know how valuable our library is and what a great opportunity to celebrate books. So I think everybody should put this on their calendar, November 3, from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. At the Tempe Public Library, there is gonna be a lot of great things to do. Local authors, booksellers, publishers, book artists, book signings, crafts, and activities for kids, and food, always important. So if you're out and about, please stop by the library November 3, from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. You know, our library is a great asset. We got a lot of really great employees that are there for you. So please make sure you mark it on your calendars, November 3, so come on out. And then, the Awards of Excellence, which was recently presented by the Arizona Center for After School Excellence. I think it's always good when we can recognize some of our winners and runner-ups. So the Kids' Own winners are Marley Masur for the Best New Program Staff. He's probably not watching, but I've known Marley since he was born, so I think this is kind of funny. So Marley Masur, congratulations, Best New Program Staff Member. Mary Boson, Professional Excellent. And the Kids' Own Program for Best Overall Program Quality Award. And then Kids' Own Runner-Up for Kids' Own Garden Program, Runner-Up for Program Innovation. I mean, I gotta tell you, we just have some really awesome individuals that, that work really hard for our people here in the city of Tempe and just really great programs that really improve the quality of life for everybody. So, you know, hats off to everybody that worked really hard, to the winners and the runner-up. Thank you, guys, for, for what you do. That's it, Mayor.
Councilman Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to recognize, over at Corono del Sol, we had a, a former student, who's an ASU student right now. His name is Chance Buckley. He was a student at Corona who learned the CCR technique to how to do compressions only at his health class. This is a program that the city helped sponsor and start. It's a program that's near and dear to my heart because it virtually came from a conversation I had with an LLC colleague, and I believe back in the, he's back from Midwest, about a program he was trying to implement in his town, and he was working with the schools to get the education and awareness, but was having a hard time gaining traction with other towns and other cities. And through this conversation, I was like, I know Tempe would probably take part of this, and we did. And it was a big kudos to that conversation, to this program, to where it is today, the support that we have from Tempe Fire Police, St. Luke's Hospitals, CR vans, a number of people, even the Phoenix Suns, to get this program every semester at our health, health class to teach the awareness of using compressions only. And Chance was able to use it on a gentleman who suffered a massive heart attack at a Baskin Robbins. The quick awareness and the response, obviously, the sooner you can do CPR, the better outcomes we have with bringing people back. And by far, because he recognized this, because he had the training, this individual, and what he told me is, he didn't have any clots, he didn't have any things that were causing his heart, so-called, like we would think, in terms of artery blockage, but it just stopped. And when it comes to that, the only thing you can do is CPR until you get some sort of rhythm back. So I would just want to give recognition to Chance and to the Tempe School District and to Tempe for implementing this program. Also, there's a free meals available for kids 18 and under at the Tempe Library on November 27. Meals are available from 3:00 to 4:00 on Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. No registration is necessary, and it's for kids under 18 to enjoy a good meal, a very healthy meal, and hope to see some people out there. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Cubey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on Saturday night, Councilmember Keating and I left the game night early to attend the CAS Central Arizona Shelter Services Dinner for Dignity. They honored Jenny Norton and Bob Ramsey, Tempe treasures. And I think many of you know Jenny Norton and Bob Ramsey and the Ramsey Social Justice Foundation, how much they've, they've helped to alleviate homelessness in the valley. We, we weren't the only ones there, there were hundreds of people. And I think John Mellencamp, Jackson Brown, Bob Dylan. And Graham Nash sent very warm messages in support of this award. Jenny and Bob are selfless heroes in our, in our city, and they, we owe the Tempe Community Action Agency and its vitality to their largesse and, and financial donations and to their grit, determination. And Barbara Norton, Jenny's mother, was the co-founder of Tempe Community Action Agency, for example. And they've also devoted, along with a small town in Guatemala, Escalante and Victory Acres neighborhood is, is beneficiary of their largesse and their philanthropy. So Jenny and Bob, we love you so much. It was so glad, we were so glad to have your father there in attendance as well. I know you had your 50th high school reunion. So you couldn't attend, something like that. But it was a wonderful night and so warm and loving, so congratulations to Jenny and Bob.
Councilmember Granville?
Yeah, just one thing. I've got a Tuesday and Wednesday, I think there's artwork, maybe there is, there we go. Got conversations with Colby, one at Boulders and one at the Lakes, although I candidly don't know which is which, I'll have to look at my calendar tomorrow. But feel free to come out and chat about whatever is on your mind. And Parrish will do all the work after that, wherever he is, since he's the one who takes all the notes and does all the work. notes and does all the work, and I will nod and say, yeah, I'll talk to Parrish about that. Thanks.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I want to thank everyone that invited us into their neighborhoods on Saturday night for game night, it was a great way to meet all kinds of neighbors throughout this great city of Tempe, so thank you to the neighborhood. Also, there's a Halloween carnival this Saturday from 5 to 9 at the Quanis Park, and I, and it's free, and then we'll have carnival games, live entertainment, face painting, food booths, and costume contests, so please join us from 5 to 9 this Saturday night at Quanis. Third, I want to wish Councilmember Navarro a happy birthday for Thursday night.
Forty-nine again.
Yeah, forty-nine again, and lastly, I want to say hi to my parents who watch from Nebraska every council meeting, so, hi, Mom and Dad.
All right.
Thirty-nine.
Councilman Navarro, and I want to thank Shawna Warner, Elizabeth Thompson, and all the neighbor services and all the city staff for their great effort on game night, tremendous turnout, and all the years I've been going to game night, by far, the, the activities are becoming more and larger and larger, more in community involvement. I had the opportunity to go with some of my fellow colleagues, Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Arredondo Savage, and was truly amazed at the outpouring support of the direction the city is going, but more importantly, seeing everyone get involved from families, from all different types of generations, from the parents to the fam, to the kids, to the grandkids, it really is exciting to see everything that's happening in our parks and our neighborhoods, it is really great. Also, as Council or Vice Mayor Cubey mentioned, congratulations to Bob and Jenny Norton, and Bob Ramsey, Jenny Norton, for their moving forward to war through CAS, they truly are inspirational leaders, they've been residents of Tempe for many, many years, and we thank them for their generosity and support, and it was a recognition that was much deserved for Bob and Jenny. With that, it does finish our announcements, but then we do have public appearances. Under public appearances, we do not have anything scheduled. Under unscheduled public appearances, is there anyone in public wishing to address this council? I was going to read a litany of things you can and cannot do, but there's no one that's coming forward, I will skip that portion. With that, we are adjourned.